All right, let's continue on with our agenda. And the next thing on the agenda is the approval of school committee meetings. We have three sets of minutes to approve.
Well, I would like to bunch them up and approve all the school committee meetings, minutes.
As written. Meeting minutes.
I will second it.
Okay, the only problem with that is that...
Have to name the dates?
That was, is that Richard wasn't here on the...
Right, on one of them.
So abstaining.
That's right down the passover.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Marion, seconded, that we accept the minutes as printed for February 14th, 2012, February 28th, 2012, and March 6th, 2012. Any discussion on any of the minutes?
I like that you put the reports with the minutes.
Yes, yeah.
It'll be there for all times.
I know.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm glad you do, because I think some of the people in the office think I'm a little fuddy-duddy about this.
Absolutely not.
Really?
We're looking at our paper supply and we can't keep stealing it from the main office.
Yeah, makes me look bad.
Some things never change.
Any further and serious discussions?
We're all a little tired.
If not, all those in favor, so signify. For, and Richard is abstaining, because he was absent.
Oh, no.
Do we have any comments from the public?
Nope.
No further ones.
John Q. Public, call one of them.
Okay, communications and correspondence.
Had one I should've given you, but I'll give you next time. Oh, that's correspondent, yeah, we got a nice lot up from a former acting student.
Jed Phillips.
Who was it?
Jed Phillips.
Jed Phillips.
How's he doing?
Sounds great, he's at MIT, I think.
He's having a great year.
He's very complimentary about his roots at acting. And I'll make sure you get it next time.
Oh, nice.
He was really nice.
Smart kid.
So none, none of us.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, I did send the advance report out with the agenda. Did include in that a draft of a 2012-13 school calendar that was patented after the one that Sanford did. And if you've got any input on it, please get it to either Trish or Kylie, and we'll put this on our April agenda.
What I want to know, are the days counted?
Once. We had that problem once.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah, because you were here bothering us with all these extra copies.
Blame the new guy.
That's his third time here. He's not here all the time.
Third time's a charm.
Fourth and last.
He said that last time, don't listen. My friendship is in jeopardy.
You're right. I don't have any other...
Sports staff.
Thank you, pardon?
Tell them about them.
What was that?
Debbie Ors's letter.
Negotiation.
Oh, yes.
Opening negotiation.
I think I already told you that, though.
Yeah, left in here.
And you sent your copy of it.
Yep.
So, I don't have anything else.
Just recognizing that they've...
Yeah, and I sent you a copy of what I responded, said when you ready to listen.
To negotiate a contract, people want to know.
So I guess I would suggest that we move on to the principal's report.
Okay, principal's report.
Okay, principal's report. I know you'd love for me to say that I've got nothing to say, but that just is not going to happen. So, in your packet, underneath my principal's report, is a copy of the letter sent out to Tracy Scully, who has been nominated for Maine's 2013 Teacher of the Year. So that was promoted by several of her colleagues and parents, started that initiative. So we're very excited that Tracy has been nominated. Events that start the ball rolling, it's a very long process after you get nominated, steps that have to be jumped through. So those events, or those hoops, start for Tracy on April 9th, up in Augusta, so you can read, so we're very excited about that opportunity. And it outlines what she has to do and what the next steps would be for any of the nominees. So that's really exciting. Also, in my report, you will see a multi-page chart that I had spoken to you about, meeting with the teachers on the early release day, with given feedback on the assessment of the school department. In the chart, you will see categories of what the staff felt was working. The number is the number of staff members who chose that topic as a "what is working." So the very highest category mentioned was team meetings, with 17 members mentioning that as one of their top five of what is working. And then I summarized all of the feedback as to why staff felt that way in the final, next column. It's important to recognize that this was a beginning assessment with a focus on positive. The second category, and then the teachers could fill out five cards on the positives. So our focus was on the positives of what's working. The next category was to identify something they felt it was a work in progress, and then they came up with a solution or reasons as to why it wasn't a fully working thing, what ideas they had to get it to move into that upper category. And again, it was organized according to most and then least amount of feedback from the staff. And then the final category is, you know, of what's missing. What else would you wish we had? What did we have before that we no longer have? What would you dream of? And again, from most often mentioned to singular mentions. And I want to point out that this was not an open-ended "tell us everything that's on your mind, everything possible." We tried to focus on things that were most prominent on the staff's mind, as opposed to every single nook and cranny of the department. However, it is important also, as we move forward and talk about vision, to look at what really is not working, you know, either from the staff's point of view, community point of view, school board point of view. It's going to be really important, in order for us to move forward, to honestly and fully assess where we are. And that's going to take a lot of hours and discussions, and it should be done in a, not just at the staff level, but in a mixed representation of the community. So, you know, obviously, I'm not going to go over every single category, but it does give you a good snapshot of where the staff sees things right now. CRT is the Crisis Response Team. This has been a neglected component, that it cannot afford to be neglected any longer. We had initial crew, Pete Smith came to me just before February vacation, talking about the missing weeks of fire prevention. That led to a discussion of fire drills and evacuations and other procedures that have not been addressed in a long time. Myself, Andy, and a handful of other staff members are very motivated to see this keep going. We're going to be having a school-level conversation, and then in April, we will have another invite. We've talked about, not only do the, does the ambulance and the fire department need to be representative, but local police, the state, and the sheriff, because we're on our every-other-month cycle of who covers us for security, looking at what we have had in the past. Even just in our conversation, that one meeting, we talked about whose names and telephone numbers were on a list that no longer were available for resources. So just updating that list of personnel and contact people was an important conversation. So this is again, one of those things which had been slipped and gone by the wayside. As spring approaches, we're going to have a timeline of practicing fire drills and evacuation procedures. The bus company was one of the people that was in on this initial conversation. But are we doing best practice for fire drill and evacuation? Are we prepared for the unexpected? And we're going to have the fire department here, actually observing our drills and giving us feedback. So there's a lot of things that we were doing on a regular basis as a school department that have fallen back, and now we, as a group, are saying, "That's not okay, it's not safe." We've even discussed the availability and how to go about training staff with CPR, so that, again, the inside safety of the school, of the students and the staff will be looked at. So you can expect to be informed as well on those upcoming meetings. And we want to make sure that every possible group that has input is in on those conversations. We're looking at it from all possible angles. We're in the final full session of STAR. Again, there'll be time set aside during the last week of school to assess our progress, decide how it can be approved, in the technical sense of like where in the school day should it be, as well as in the implementation of specific programs at different grade levels. I've got Brenna Whitney was talking to me, she was doing a geography lesson for specific students, and she said she was noticing the carryover into the regular classroom. I've heard that remarked many times with staff. I had a few parents come up to me and talk to me that their child was benefiting. It went from a very uncomfortable situation to have that small group intervention, to students feeling much more secure in their classrooms. So I'm excited to see that keep progressing. And I got to say, the staff went from, a lot of staff willing but not sure of how to proceed, and just in this year alone, the tremendous growth and implementation of successful programs, and creatively successful programs, has been fabulous. I've added, in my report, a report out from Rick Keshes, who has been going above and beyond trying to give experiential learning to the students. So I said, "Hey, Rick, you know, what are you doing right now, and what have you done in the past?" So there's a sample. Almost everything that he has organized for the students under his care over the last handful of years has been grant-funded, fundraised, they have a spaghetti dinner coming up in the fifth and sixth grade. He just added the Gundalo Strawberry Bank, which is a actual, I don't know the name of the ship itself, but they actually, actually go out onto a boat off of Strawberry Bank, out in the harbor, and learn hands-on there. So again, he is just passionate about getting the experiential learning for the students. I also presented Sanford's calendar to the staff, for them to give feedback to me as to where they feel it is beneficial to line up with Sanford and where it is not. There's always the concern that we don't act like just another elementary school of Sanford. But at the same time, even with my next conversation on the backside of the report, we are looking to see how we can efficiently and appropriately share resources, and that includes, MLP stands for My Learning Plan. As I've mentioned before, I had a conversation with Jan Goldsbury, who is the curriculum coordinator for Sanford. She, right now, has our teaching staff, the teachers, signed up onto this Internet access program. So all staff development that Sanford offers its teachers free of charge are now going to be offered to acting teachers free of charge. And we did have Kristy King and Pat Reeves able to take advantage of what was a couple of things offered last Friday during the teacher workshop time. The expectation is that if this works come September, we will have all teachers and ed techs, anyone who is required to go back on a regular basis for certification and needs contact hours, will have access to this. As Sanford moves forward with their plan for standards-based learning and the risk model, which is based on that, we will also have that conversation and that access for our staff. You know, expecting that, we would want to make sure we knew what was headed next for our students going from eighth grade into the high school. It is not a mandatory type of thing where, you know, you don't say to your staff, "Everybody's going to go to this particular training all the time." But as the vision comes through for acting school department, you know, you will want to see where it does fit. I've also expressed my interest to Jan, that I think I have a lot of expertise on my staff. And so as she continues to converse with me about how she goes about making the plans, I think I have staff that could be offering those workshops as well, that staff development. So I expect it to be an exchange of services and resources. If there is anything that is a cost to Sanford, I have agreed that acting would share a proportional piece if my teachers access the same information. So if they actually pay to have somebody come in and do a workshop day, and it costs them X amount of dollars, and I send my staff, then we would only pay a portion of that cost. So that's where it's important to have the conversation about where the calendar lines up, because if our workshop days are the same, that allows us to have those opportunities. But they also offer Tuesday afternoon workshop, like an hour after school, and they have summer programs as well. So by jumping on now, even though it's only a half a year at this point, I wanted the staff to have that opportunity and knowledge of what they're offering during the summer, in case they're interested.
If the calendar has to align, I hope the staff understands, because of busing. It really, you know, having the kids at the high school, I realize we have to really be insane.
We do try as much as possible, but there are occasional times, Sanford has a lot more early release days than we have ever been comfortable with.
Yeah.
So that's a trade-off, too, that, you know, our staff would rather a full day with the students, unless we're sure what we're going to be doing for those half-days.
But to align it with that for busing purposes...
We do as much as possible.
You know, the expense of busing is, you know...
Well, and a lot of our staff have students at the Sanford district, too. So, you know, they live in Sanford, and so matching that for their family works. But I really, you know, I've said to the...
Well, doesn't work.
What's that?
And their kids being...
Well, that's why we do align, you know, like when are their teacher workshop days, those kinds of things. But it's really important, and I've said this when I've met with the superintendent in Sanford, or even Jan, my talk to Jan, it doesn't always, what works for Sanford doesn't always work for acting. So I don't want them to think it's just carte blanche, assimilate. What I want to have the conversation is, how can we take advantage of these opportunities of shared resources? And like I said, I expect it to be an exchange, that my staff has knowledge and expertise that, even though they have, you know, four times the staff, that doesn't mean they have everything we have for knowledge and expertise, and I want to give my staff that opportunity to share that. So there's my report.
Well, you know, we talked about being a donut hole. The other thing about being a donut hole is we said we would have ongoing conversations with Sanford and collaboration with them to keep costs down. I think, you know, having someone like a curriculum coordinator that we will not be able to afford here, oh my goodness.
Right.
And we have access to a person like that, I think is great. And I think that's because we do collaborate.
Right, and My Learning Plan is a $12 membership per year, per person. So for all that access, it's a very reasonable upfront cost. And, you know, Jan has said she is willing to continue the conversation with me about ways in which we can coordinate. And then, you know, I bring it back to the staff and let them give their input. But again, it does tie into, we talked about before, you know, if we know what the vision is, then my staff can also know which courses are best for them to be pursuing, which workshops are going to be meaningful, because the school department wants them to be pursuing that information. You know, so I think having that conversation, right now, it's, again, it's in the infancy stage, but it's going to be really important to look at, you know, where do we want our investment into staff development to go? You know, every teacher will always have their personal things that they're passionate about, but what does the school department, you know, want for a direction? And this will allow some of that conversation, I hope, to happen at a very low cost.
Any other questions for Trish? If not, then we'll move on to the Special Education Director's report.
Well, my, the first part of my report is about the budget, which is done. Yay! And I wanted to thank Carlene for all her help in helping me prepare that and collaborating with me on the hour report, which is in, done, signed, sealed, and completed. So I was happy about that. And I am delighted to say that I've been participating in the Teacher Leader Group, which is really outside of my special ed role, which I really, I'm really enjoying. And I facilitated the meeting, the K-2 meeting on last Thursday, and Trish already reviewed what we discussed, but primarily it was around the chart that was prepared and the calendar. And I enjoyed participating in that. Student programming, basically, we're starting transition planning for students. Actually, it occurs, it's ongoing, but right now is really where we focus on those kids going up to the high school who have pretty significant needs. And actually, some of the teachers have participated in the team meetings that we have scheduled for those students. We started doing that. And we also have meetings planned with Sanford High School, in addition to that, on a day in May, so that they will, they will come here and meet with us on those, on our special ed students. The transition planning, to me, is critically important for the success of our students. So I kind of consider myself a little bit of an expert on transition planning, so I have shared that with the staff, and have been very welcoming in regards to that. And of course, we're meeting, you know, on our students, our special ed team meetings are taking place, on evaluations, IEPs that need to be reviewed annually, and also on summer programming, which we, at those meetings, we determine eligibility for our students who are eligible for special ed services in the summer. And that's about it. Kind of a short report, but...
We like short.
Anybody have any questions for Joy or comments? I think it's great that a little more time is being spent to help the kids transition into high school, because going from little acting school, where you're pretty much sheltered for eight, right up through eighth grade, really, going into a big, it's difficult for kids who don't have special needs, and I think for kids with special needs, it's the adjustment can be really scary. So I think that's a great idea, to take them for visits and expose them a little bit at a time, and until they, so that they, by the time they really go there, they feel Anything else? Thank you very much, Joy. Next will be the Facilities Director's report.
Mine also starts off with mentioning the budget, being pretty much in full swing. I've also met with Carlene, as I know that she's working on the year-end projections, and looking at account balances, and what I have planned for the remainder of the year. And at this point, I'm very confident that I'll be able to complete everything that I have planned on. The lighting project is about halfway completed. This side of the building is pretty much done, with the exception of one pole light. This side of the building has all of the wall packs installed, and they'll be coming on Thursday to finish the installation of the pole lighting. So you'll probably notice that the building lights tonight are quite a bit brighter, and if you leave and go this way, you'll see that the parking lot itself is quite a bit brighter.
Is it as bright as Town Hall?
Um, is it as bright as Town Hall? I don't, I don't know.
You can land the plane at Town Hall.
I remember my first year here and having, coming out of the city, my first night, it was, this part of the building was still under construction, dark. I was, I'd never seen anything so dark. There were no lights on the parking lot at that point, I think, maybe one, I don't know.
Should've seen it when they turned off the streetlights in Town. What streetlights? Twelve of them, in case anybody...
It is a big adjustment.
And all twelve.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill Watts, he was on the finance, well, town people voted to shut that off.
How many times, how many times, though, have we, you know, just been without, even when we've had these lights out here, how many times have we come in for meetings and said, "There's no lights out there, where are the lights?" So it'll be great to...
And I'm very happy from a safety standpoint, that it's going to be brighter, less maintenance, which is great. It's, I'm looking forward to have it, looking forward to having it done.
And these were LEDs, right?
Yes, LEDs.
Yeah, save us some money on electricity.
Yeah. They come with like a five-year warranty, too, so it's, that's a good thing on the maintenance, yes. As Trish mentioned, the Crisis Response Team met on March 6th. That meeting definitely showed that we've got some work to do with the CIT plan. The fire department had some great information to share with us. A number of other concerns came up during the meeting, that were definitely concerns that we need to work on addressing. And I'm hoping to get the CIT plan back up to a plan that used to be kind of set up here, that other schools looked at and used as a model. Get it back into place, because there are definitely some valid concerns that came up and definitely need to be addressed. Other than that, pretty much our regular daily cleaning and building maintenance is going relatively smooth. Building use is very busy, which is great. And I'll be looking for my April vacation list to start to grow, as far as what I'm anticipating on doing during April vacation. Right now, I'm planning on the kitchen floor replacement as one of my major projects for April vacation. So that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
Steven Shaw.
Keep going down.
I know, it'll make you guys happy. I'm trying to take the steps to migrate our current library server that keeps track of all our books in here, over to a new one that has more horsepower. I can only do it during the nights or the weekends when it's not being utilized, and usually I have an infant in my hands at that time, so it's been hard to take that project on. We're also trying to get Pat, Ms. Reeves' projector mounted. The electrician should be doing that when they're done with the lighting, so we can investigate whether the boards we got in her room are better or worse than the smart boards we've been buying, because the boards in her room, you can also write on, and they have a lifetime warranty. A couple months ago, before things got hectic for me, I sent an email out to the faculty asking if they'd be interested in starting technology teams, and what kind of teams would they like to organize. Basically, what a technology team will do is, it'll be a group of people who are trained in a specific thing, such as smart boards, or utilizing Google Docs or Google Apps sufficiently, and then other faculty members can look to them for support, instead of having me do it. So I'm working on getting that...
Instead of hitting the mic panic button.
Yeah, I'm getting that, I'm trying to get that up and running. And another thing that was put on the back burner while my hectic life took over was the computers, there was a couple computers in the teachers', in the classrooms that weren't hooked up, so I'm trying to hook those up.
I know.
Finishing that up.
I mean, it's floppy. It's just totally thrown him.
But on top of all this, we also put the copiers in place. Teachers have started to use them as printers, as well as copiers. With them in place, I'll be removing two printers from our inventory, which will hopefully turn around and decrease our print costs annually. So we'll probably be seeing some savings there as well, as our copier annual savings, which was like a thousand-something. So that should come around as well. So I think that's about it here.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
I certainly hope he recovers.
I know.
A couple more months. A couple more months.
That's the one that's fun for us.
Starts moving.
Yeah, until they get into your computer.
Even when they grow up and say, this is not over.
Exactly.
I'm new to this.
Take my word for it.
Okay, let's go on to the-
I'm minding my own business.
Finance report.
All right, well, you have your financial report through March 7th. It looks like we're still pretty much on track. We have forty-four point seventy-three percent left in the budget, which is good to know. I've been meeting with Trish, Joy, and Bob, and also Andy.
Whether she wants to or not.
To go over the final touches of the budget, I guess that was on top on everybody's list. Just making sure all the details are right there and nothing, they're all in compliance with the collective bargaining agreements. We want to stay right on the timeline that Jennifer Rue has proposed because we don't want to offset anything, she's going to send things to the printers. So it's good we're keeping on track. Dawn has been assisting me in getting a bunch of the things ready for the next year's school year. The draft calendar's been set up, switched over to Acton. Started the salary contracts. And just basically setting up all the forms that we need to start the next school year have already been going. The new copiers have already arrived. And Mike has set the teacher laptops up with direct printing capabilities. And one of the things I am requesting tonight is that the board approve that we sign the municipal lease purchase agreement with Anders Skoggan Bank. I need that in writing of the minutes. I have the final paperwork here, they are the ones that are going to be funding the copier lease for us. So I've been in touch with them. This is what I received today. And Lucky Bob has the capabilities of signing for Betsy. And that's how it's written right in here. So if you approve that, then Bob can sign it and I can get them out in the mail tomorrow.
I'll entertain a motion to sign the financial agreement with Anders Skoggan Bank for the lease for the new copiers.
Some moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we approve signing, the signing of the financial arrangement with Anders Skoggan Bank. Any further discussion?
Did the other copier company buy out the lease?
The new company did.
Right.
Yes.
They bought out the old lease.
They bought out the old lease on top of giving us the new, the new copiers. And we've also been able to reduce the price because we've also lowered the per copy price.
Yeah.
In, in the budget paper.
It is in there for a diff, right. The amount of this is going to actually be lower, but the reason it's in there at a little bit higher cost is because what's going to happen is Mike's going to disconnect some of the printers from, at least two that we know of. And because we're going to have direct capability from our computers, we won't be using the other printers. So one cost is going to go up and one's going to go down. So we will save on the printing side and on the ink side. But you'll see, we left that as is just because we know that the amount of copies are going to go up.
I heard it got stuck the other day.
What?
Somebody was messing with it.
Any further discussion on this motion, which is on the floor?
It's been three days.
No? If not, all those in favor of signing the financial agreement? Five-oh?
Okay. Three steps ahead of me right now. We've got eight pages.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions for Carlene? All right then, thank you, Carlene. Any reports from committees, either long-term or the policy committee?
Long-term did not meet.
We anticipate a meeting and then we don't know the job description.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
All those in favor?
Instead of five-oh, it was like nine-oh.